Hi, good evening. Welcome to the November 21st, 2022 Marion City School Board Meeting. We're heading to the end of the year. Everybody should be excited about that. Welcome, everyone. Would you please stand and we'll do the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Veronica, please call the roll.
Mr. Ratliff?
Here.
Mr. Weidling?
Here.
Ms. Dyer?
Here.
Mr. McKinnis?
Here.
And Mr. McKay?
Here. All right, we'll go to item three, the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, thank you, Madam President. At this time, I'd like to remind everyone that our mission is to inspire a community of achievement. And speaking of our mission, I want to go ahead and invite Brina Loxley up, who is going to talk about our micro-farm update.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so I am Ms. Brina Loxley. I am the new agribusiness teacher here at Harding. Just to give you guys a rundown, what we're doing and also along with the micro-farm. I know Grace has a video prepared for you, kind of going over what that's doing with the community. But when it comes to Harding High School students, with the micro-farm, we have our agribusiness program. Agribusiness is one of the five pathways through Ohio offered that's related to agricultural sciences. And so this year, we have two courses along with that. It's our agricultural food natural resources, which is like the intro class, and then a little bit more advanced class called animal and plant science. So with that, the students are basically getting lots of hands-on experience through the micro-farm and also in my classroom. Currently, where we just covered soil, plant sciences, and then we're working on food science technology. Next semester, we have a lot more with animals and then agriculture mechanics, things like that, and also agribusiness. So basically just business associated with commodities and the production agriculture side. And then with that, we also have FFA. And I've been told that Harding, we have just now finalized and chartered our official FFA chapter, and the kids are officially FFA members. So I believe that's the first in Harding history. So definitely very exciting for the students. Comes with that the leadership, the leadership development component associated with agricultural sciences curriculum. And also hopefully, we're hopefully soon, we have radishes in the micro-farm right now, so we'll be harvesting those shortly since they're a cold weather crop. And then we'll be taking a break until the spring and hopefully have some students that are going to get some work-based learning hours in there. And then we'll do some more science and lab activities out in the greenhouse and high tunnels and hopefully have those over the summer. Students are very excited to be out and about in there, and it's a lot of really great hands-on experience for them. And then just a little update recruitment-wise, hopefully next year, we're excited to present to the freshmen and sophomores tomorrow with the career tech education cohort and really starting to get kids involved in our programs, especially agribusiness with it being a new offering here at Harding. So, yep, that's what I got.
If we wanted to buy produce from your micro-farm, can we do that?
That is a Grace question. She coordinates all that kind of stuff. We are meeting with an ODE rep tomorrow that focuses on the, I believe it's called Farm the School Program through the department. So we'll be meeting with her tomorrow and talk more about using that. And that way, I know there's other school districts around us that are going to kind of integrate that. Again, I think it's just once the production ups, that might be more of an opportunity, but that's a Grace question, so. But it'd be a good goal for us.
It looks great out there.
Yes, we're very excited the kids like it, so.
One second. FAA, right?
FFA, yeah.
Is there any plans to do any of the activities or any kind of participation in their events at this point? I know we're just at the beginning stages for us.
Yeah.
Right? Is there any plans for that kind of participation yet, or are we working on those?
Right now, I have, do have some students that are willing participants. I had one student compete in the job interview career development event. That was earlier in the month. She competed at the sub-district level, and there's just different levels, kind of like any sport. It just depends how big the contest is. So that one starts down at a county contest and a sub-district and so on. So she competed there. There are some conference, leadership night conferences coming up that I'm trying to organize for students to participate in. And then state convention is one of the big goals because since we are a new chapter, we will be presented, I think it's a banner, on stage at convention in the spring. So I hope to have some students there to receive that award.
I think we hope as well.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, just making sure.
Yes.
Okay.
Very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you, Brina. I'm gonna go ahead and show you kind of a short video of what.
Oh, yes.
There's no volume.
Oh, you know, the problem is, it's coming through your HDMI. You need to separate the HDMI from the, you need to choose on your audio.
This one?
Yes.
Everyone, my name is Grace, and I'm the program coordinator for the micro-farm. I'm going to give you a quick overview of what we've been up to this year and what we have planned for next year. We currently have 16 adult farmers going through our training program. We started our first classes at the beginning of May, and we started building the farm here at Harding towards the end of June. Since then, we've been working on building it up, getting everything ready to grow, and everything's pretty much done. We just have a couple little jobs to finish up. But we have actively been using it for the past several months. We've grown lettuce, kale, carrots, radishes, beets, and parsley. And we're going to be moving on to bigger and more difficult-to-grow crops next year, like tomatoes, peppers, cucumbers, a plant, all that kind of stuff. But we've currently already grown over 1,000 pounds of crops, and we've sold all of those through the Richland Grow Up in Mansfield. Next year, we're going to continue selling through Richland Grow Up, but we're also hoping to expand to some more people in the Marion community as well. Marion Matters has been helping us along with this project. It's helped us apply for grants, and they're really helping to get our farmers ready to open and establish their own businesses at the beginning of 2024. I've also been working with Brenna. I've helped with a couple of her classes, and we've been meeting and trying to figure out how they can implement it into their curriculum more next year. Right now, they'll have at least a couple rows to work with out here, and the rest will be for our farmers to do their training on. By the summer next year, we'll probably max out our capacity here. So we're hoping to have at least another micro-farm at another site up and running so that we can use that in conjunction with this site for our training purposes. We're currently finishing up our farm trainings. Today, we are harvesting some of our kale and carrots, and then we'll move back into the classroom to go over some more details and figure out our crop plan for next year. I've had help from OSU and CSU extension professionals to help teach some of our classes, along with Kip Curtis from Ohio State, who has been helping me through this. And if you ever have any questions or you'd like to take a tour of the farm, feel free to reach out to me. My email is G. Cornell at NCS Presidents.org.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
You know, I do have actually a couple of announcements, and sorry for not having those on there. But just want to point out, I know Sophia, who's here this evening, did an article. But just to point out the great work that Mr. Hankey's class is doing in here with our mission statement, obviously over here on this wall, in the wall behind me. But I want to say thank you publicly for him and the students that are doing that within the classroom. And then just to remind folks, again, our band will be traveling to Tampa for the bowl game, and they're still raising funds. The, I'd like to point out, both our American Legions have stepped up big time, along with some private donors, retirees, alumni, truly, you know, paying forward. But if folks are still interested in donating, they can go to jhartman@MCSpresidents.org. So I want to give them a shout out. Thank you.
All right. Item F, Assistant Superintendent's Report. Olympia?
To President McKay and to the other board members, good evening. Tonight, we are going to take our first step at looking at pulling some quarter one discipline data. So we have a conduct review here, and we're going to go over some of our discipline data for quarter one. And then Johnny Jackson is going to come up and also share what we're doing with the ASCD whole-child update. So I'll let Mr. Mazzy go ahead and open up.
Thank you.
I'm going to take you a little bit down memory lane, a little bit, to a previous presentation, I believe in the August board meeting, when, you know, this issue came to light, I think more or less when we started here, myself, and then, of course, Olympia moving forward and then getting together with our team and deciding, okay, you know, what do we need to do moving forward? And so, you know, this is again a reflection of a past presentation, but I just want to get everybody's mindset again of where we were. Go ahead. So if you recall, I wanted to open discussion with a reflection of a previous presentation. At that time, we discussed all the things in the district and what we've done as far as reflecting on the past, then moving forward to implement these internal initiatives. And even since this slide, and you'll see in a minute, we've actually added some external service providers. But again, just to kind of refresh everyone's mind about how important this is to our district, to the community, to the staff, to the students, to everyone, and, you know, what we're working through. Then we have our external provider partnerships. And again, when we talked about at that time, what we stressed was, we need really to exhaust all avenues. You know, what are we going to do to address the problem? And again, it's everybody working together. It's the schools, it's the community, it's everyone. And so by engaging different partners, we actually expanded some of these. So I just wanted to point that out. And at that time, what we talked about before we go on to this was that we stressed that we now needed time. We needed time for consistent implementation of the strategies and a philosophy of support for our student code of conduct. Part of this also included several meetings with our principals and supervisors so that they not only understand the importance of this topic, but also understand how it's viewed by both the superintendent and assistant superintendents' offices, essentially for calibration purposes. And again, while we know we still have work to do and have had some hiccups, and I think part of that has been some communication issues with expectations and probably frankly, some previous mindsets that, you know, we're moving forward with a plan that we think is going to serve our district well. So again, we also said at that time that it won't change overnight, but we certainly believe we're trending in the right direction and that we're going to continue to reinforce expectations and be diligent and consistent with these expectations because then only will true change occur. And I think where we've gotten to the point in this year and what you see and what we're going to be doing, I think hopefully you'll agree. So I'm going to turn it over to Olympia and the team to talk about this.
Okay, so in the next four slides that we're going to show you, these are going to be, we're required with EMIS of what we report to the state. So we have in-school suspensions, out-of-school suspensions, expulsions, and bus suspensions. So I do want to say there are a number of things that can happen before a child were to get suspended. But our first slide up here is, and our quarter one ended, I believe, on October 20th. So this data goes through October 20th. You'll see there, elementary, we don't have any in-school suspensions because we really don't have a structure set up for that. So again, as Steve and I and our team are really trying to look at structures in place, you know, these are, this might be one of the areas that we look at. But I want to point out the reason why that's zero is because we don't right now have a structure for that. So you'll see there that what I've done here is put the number of actual in-school suspensions. So these represent the number of times a in-school suspension has been issued during the first quarter. And then we also look at the number of students. So it kind of puts it into perspective that many of these students have been issued this in-school suspension possibly more than once. So you'll see that that number is lower. And then in that last column, we started to look at the percentage of students overall. So out of all of our middle school students, 11% of them have experienced an in-school suspension, and high school there, you see a 7.9%. I will also say that we welcome any feedback today, tonight, as we're going through this. If there's other ways that you would like to see the data or for us to break apart, we're going to be looking at it with our teams to determine disaggregating it in different ways. So if you have any suggestions as a board member, things that you're interested in or you feel that we should incorporate into our next presentation, please feel free to share that with us.
On that last slide, that would be the, yeah, the 4.9 would be the difference between middle school and high school, right? Not a total would be about 9%?
Total student body.
No, it's 4.9% of all of the students.
Of all the students in?
The district.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just middle school, high school?
Middle district. I counted all of them in there.
But I'm, meaning elementary's kids are in that?
Yes. All right. Next slide is our out-of-school suspensions. You'll see again, number of times an out-of-school suspension has been issued compared to the number of students and then the actual percentage of our student population there in the end column. And again, this is aligned with, you know, what we look at with our tier one, tier two, tier three. So typically, we have, at the top tier, we have a group of students that we know need additional support. And so those are the, that is the data for our quarter one out-of-school. So the next slide has our expulsions. As you see, I do have a star denoted there. Anything that is less than five, we will not report, just to protect confidentiality of any student. So you can deduct that from that slide that we've had less than five, and you could see that those have occurred at the middle school level. Expulsion is anything out of school for more than 10 days. And last but not least, we have our quarter one bus suspensions. You'll see there that we have middle school. The bus suspensions for elementary have been less than five. I will reiterate what Steve said. We recognize that we had some communication issues with how write-ups and things have been entered with our bus drivers. So we are working with them. We met with Jen Fozna to clarify those procedures moving forward. And so we will work on that piece. In the next slide, I'm going to ask Johnny to come up. So again, we are constantly looking for ways that we can address some of the issues that we're having. And we really want, and we know, that if we put a lot of focus on those tier one students, which is the majority of our students, that's going to help us overall. So we have been selected to participate in a really awesome opportunity through ASCD and the state of Ohio. And I don't want to take away from Mr. Jackson and Jenny Faxon because they are actually the ones who sought out this grant. And I don't know how familiar you are with the whole-child initiative, but it's actually a framework that we believe strongly is going to help us as we move forward. So Johnny's going to share a little bit about how we have received this grant.
Can I ask a question about the previous couple of slides?
Sure.
You want to wait till at the end? Because I think it's important that we talk. Because I know you, are you the appeal person as far as expulsions are concerned? And what does that committee kind of look like? And what are you, what are you looking at as far as those are concerned? Is that data reflected? If a person were to, if a person's parent were to appeal an expulsion of more than 10 days or a suspension, what does the appeal process look like for parents?
Well, we haven't had any appeals for expulsions, but it wouldn't come to me because I'm part of the team that's making the decision for the expulsion. So it would go to Mr. Mazzy if there was an appeal. Now, if you're talking about building suspensions, they can appeal a suspension. But really, if we investigate that appeal, we're really looking to see if the process was followed. So it's not necessarily to say, if a principal says, I'm going to give you five days, and a parent says, well, I don't, I think my kids should only have two days. That's not really what the appeal process is. The appeal process is going to say, did the principal follow the process of the due process? Did you give them notice? Did you have a hearing with the student? And so that, the appeal is not necessarily about the consequence, the number of days. It's just for us to go in to make sure that the process has been followed.
And is that, is that stated in our policy about that?
Yes, that's in board policy and administrative guidelines.
Okay.
Yes.
It's also in the student code of conduct and student handbook. And I think what you're also pointing towards a little bit, Ms. Dyer, is that there's a hearing when those things come. And at that point, Olympia is the hearing officer. So she'll hear the expulsion and then make a determination on that expulsion level or it might be. And then, as you stated, if there was a disagreement at that point, the person could request then an appeal to that hearing. So.
I just wanted, I just wondered if there was an opportunity for parents to be able to be a part of the process in that appeal kind of a thing. And you're saying point toward the student code of conduct and our board policy.
Correct.
Okay.
It's part of the law. Yep. Some don't show up.
Could you talk to me about how I'm seeing that we have kids at the elementary being expelled from school, but we don't have an in-school suspension like? So these are a slide with elementary kids being thrown out of school, but they don't have an in-school option. Why, why do we not have an in-school option, but we're, you know, kicking them out of school? Is that just, we don't have facilities? We don't have the programming or? Because I think we would have an in-school option before we would be throwing them out of school for an elementary student.
So, great question. So everything you said is what happens. And again, it's not unique to Marion, is that when there's an issue like that, there are times when the staff of the building, whether it be teachers or administrators, try to have that student sit up in the office, because I've seen it. So they're removed from the classroom. You're quote unquote on this in-school suspension, but they essentially come up and they sit in the office. And people that are working in and around the office frankly, become the supervisors of that child. So again, probably not the most unique situation. So when, when that's not part of the solution or variable, Mr. Ratliff, as you see up there, is then the child is suspended because we don't have, as you alluded to, we don't have the place, we don't have the resources for that at that level currently. So, you know, it's all about prioritization. If that's a priority of the district and we want to see that, it certainly can be investigated, absolutely. It's just, it's a dollar connect, it's going to be a dollar connected with it.
Yeah, I'm just saying. So what you're saying is normally, before they get to the out-of-school, they went to, I guess back in my day, you'd go to the office and you'd sit for an extended period of time till maybe your behavior was corrected. And this would be also, schools that have peace rooms, that's not been effective, right?
Yeah, I would say those are two different things. But you're right in a way that, how you described it back in the day, because, you know, we both experienced that. So the peace room is more as a de-escalation. You know, a child's getting elevated, so, you know, hey, we can go to the peace room and de-escalate. So if it's a situation where that just isn't possible, that child is going right to the office and sitting there frankly, and the administration will make a determination at that point, should this child go home? Or is it a situation where they can go back? Or maybe if it's the end of the day, they can make it till the end of the day. But they don't have that room like the middle school and high school have with a person to do the in-school or the ALC.
Yeah, because when I look at this as a board member, I'm concerned that elementary kids are not given the opportunity for in-school before they're placed out of school, where we're doing that for both middle and high school students.
Sure.
And if, you know, to me, obviously, they probably don't understand their behaviors as much as we would expect a high school student, but yet they're given the opportunity to work through those within the school setting. And we're just sending elementary kids home and saying, hey, we have no room to do that kind of behavioral stuff here, which creates a problem, I think, within the system that we need to obviously explore. We're not going to get the answer tonight. But that's just what I'm seeing from some of this, is we don't have that. And you're telling me that we've explored, at least they're getting some options, whether it be at the, whether peace rooms are not working or, you know, they're going to the office before we get to the ultimate kick-out measure, I guess. So they're getting some.
Yes.
Level of severity of treatment before they're actually suspended from the school at least.
Right. And it would have to be, and I think the staff, you know, does a great job. You know, when you decide you're going to get to that point where you're going to remove a child from their educational setting, you know, it's a big deal. And so I know in talking to folks that, you know, depending on the act, you know, if it's really egregious, then, you know, they're, my expectation, and I've said it, is, you know, they're going to be out. If it's something that they felt, that is felt they can be worked with, then there are conferences with the parent. There's conferences with the parent and the teacher, conferences with the parent, teacher, and administration, et cetera, if you will, an escalation of consequences. To the point where, and again, depending on the act, because there's some things that require that, you know, we're doing this right now, you're being removed, versus we're going to work with the child up through this escalation of consequences, if you will.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to add, I appreciate that the peace rooms are not turning into a dumping ground for kids who could be in school. So you don't want it to turn into something that was never intended to be. But I think something that maybe should be explored and be a tough decision in terms of the effectiveness of the peace rooms versus with limited facilities and limited space and personnel, would it be worth replacing? And the immediate reaction might be resounding, don't you dare do this. Or some people might say, eh, you might have to take a look at it. Do you replace the peace rooms with an in-school suspension room? And that's, and that's, again, just something to, again, with, ideally, we have both. You know, we have enough room for a peace room and enough room for in-school suspension. But if, yeah, I guess that'd be something to explore. So I've heard, just through hearsay, great things about the peace room so far. But I think a valid point is raised too.
Sure.
So ultimately, we just want, it's got to be really egregious for the child to be removed from the school setting, is what you're saying. And there are certain steps that we take before that actually happens. And historically, remember, we did have a space, I don't know how long ago it was, where we were sending, it used to be the Boys and Girls Club, where we were sending, I think, third through maybe fifth grade?
I don't.
Yeah, over there. And then it became a, an opportunity for the same students that were there. And it did become, in your words, a dumping ground. So there have been explorations in those areas where those students were expelled or suspended or whatever. I don't know if it was the best fit for Marion City Schools, but I think that's also what evolved into what we're seeing as far as the WAC and other type situations are concerned. And I heard you say there might be a dollar amount as far as?
Well, sure, because again, it's a program, and with programs come people. So, you know, or even if it was an off-site, like your story you're alluding to, then certainly. But even if it's in-house, again, unless it's existing staff somehow, you're adding a program and a person's going to be attached to a program to be in that elementary. So, but again, to reiterate what you said, there's a lot that is tried in between. So again, the egregious act versus, you know, this student has, you know, almost like, let's say, you know, the first time you get pulled over for speeding, right? Well, you might get one thing versus the eighth time you get pulled over, and then everything in between, the escalation of consequences is probably going to go up. So for a child to be removed, aside from the egregious act, it could be, there are so many acts in between that, for lack of a better phrase, somebody is not getting the message, whether it's the child, whether it's the parent, whether it's both. And so we feel we have to escalate the consequence to make it serious.
And I know when it was done before, the onus was put on the, the teacher. And the teacher had to provide work for the, the student in order to participate in that program. So it became, you know, a burden on teachers because they would get these packets together for these students to continue, you know, continuation of learning. And then when the student came back, it wouldn't just be like culture shock, that kind of thing. But there was no substitute for instructional, because it became a one-on-one type of thing as opposed to teacher-type instruction. And it did become that dumping ground. So if we're going to look into something like that for those elementary students, I think quality is something that I would definitely insist on because we don't want those days or, what is it, three to five or 10 days to be, you know, for nothing. So.
All good? Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Delfora and also Mr. Razey for inviting us to come and speak. And thank you for it too. I do want to just give a timeline. G Daxton, I, in June of 2022, decided that this would be a good opportunity for Marion City Schools to have made it in the Ohio Whole Child Pilot Cohort. And the state of Ohio, the Ohio Department of Education has a, this framework, you can see on the right side, has the visual, the data about the, the child and also the educator in the middle. And then healthy, safe, engaged, challenged, supported are the ecosystems around that particular educator and that particular child or our school or community. Then in July of 2022, we were selected as one of 10 schools in the state of Ohio to participate in this pilot cohort. September 2022, we started the school improvement survey. And 339 staff members across the buildings, across the district, were able to engage in this particular survey. We'll kind of show you some of the data that came out of that. And then November 2nd, we had a virtual meeting. And I have to say that in these virtual meetings that we've had, the Department of Student Services and Enrollment Services and also Teaching and Learning, a lot of us have gotten together and done a lot of collaboration. I don't know if you all remember, a couple of years back, we talked a lot about the ways in which we could take down silos and collaborate across the district. And we're putting those things into action, particularly when we're looking at the leadership pillar. So we've been doing a lot of work across the context. November 17th, we had those educators here in district and they were able to visit some of our schools. And then we did a half-day training with Student Services, Teaching and Learning, and some elementary staff and Enrollment Services too. And then late November, we're going to do another reflection. Next slide, please. When we're thinking about our whole child framework here in Marion City Schools, their initial visit, we looked at Harding High School, George Washington Elementary School, Grant Middle School, and McKinley. Because the day was so compact, we wanted to see elementary school setting, middle school setting, and a high school setting. And then in the afternoon, we had a chance to do a planning session. Again, Enrollment Services, Teaching and Learning, Student Services, and Taff Elementary School, were able to engage in this kind of conversation around, if we have our educators and our children in the middle, what does it look like for us to have healthy, safe, engaged, supported, and challenged environments? And then we're going to have a future site visit where we're going to do some more planning with other elementary and high school, middle school members. Our next slide, please. So in the state of Ohio, this is what the framework looks like. I think it's particularly important to see that, that community partnership piece. As you were listening earlier to the microform project, like you can hear the importance of community partnerships and that ecosystem. This is the same type of framework that we're trying to instill here in Marion City Schools, ecological model where community partnerships are important. You also see the family as partner in the education. And then again, in the middle, you see healthy environments, safe environments, engaged environments, supportive environments, and challenged environments. And you see all of those different particular points that are important for both our educators and our students to learn, but also the community and the families to be a part of the whole process. Our next slide, please. And then this is some of our demographic data. As I mentioned earlier, we had about 339 people in our district. Employees take part in this particular survey. And you can see, majority were classroom teachers because we really wanted to hear teachers' voices when it comes to what a whole educator model would look like. But then we also had other staff members too who engage in this particular tool. Next slide, please. And so this is the learning. You can see that the red and the orange, those are areas of improvement for Marion City Schools. So we're looking at health and safety, engaged, and then also sustainability. Those 339 members of our district said that those were the areas in which we needed to improve. When it comes to supported and also challenged, those were the areas where they felt where we were on bar or on par, and we also were exceeding their expectations. So these are our tenant scores. One of the things that we'd want to do, we want to use this data to further engage educators and our students and also the community to, one, improve those healthy, safe, engaged, and sustainable environments, but then also keep where we are when it comes to being supported in challenged environments. Next slide, please. So, yeah, I'll stop there and I'll pass the mic to Mrs. Delfora.
And just to close, again, this is another repeat slide from when we presented in August, but we just want to make sure that it stays at the forefront of the things that we've been doing to address this area. We're continuing to seek ongoing feedback from multiple stakeholders. I know that you see the different subgroups we're meeting with. I believe we even have a meeting that we're planning in December with Marion County Children's Services. So we continue to seek these opportunities to collaborate. Also, just continuing to start to pull these reports and to look at this data across grade bands to see if any trends pop out to us. We also, you know, we're meeting with the principals individually to look at their students, each individual incident, and having those conversations about how we might be able to support for those students that need additional support. Again, there are a lot of processes and procedures, both Steve and I being new, we're still learning some of them. And, you know, we're bringing some ideas from our previous work in other districts. We have also worked out for some of our principals to get some professional learning by going to do some school visits with some other, in some other districts that we know that principals have been able to do well and have overcome some of these challenges with their students. So usually that principal group is hard to get professional development for because in many districts, principals are the only, you know, there's only one administrator at the building. We do have a team here, but we have started to try to find ways to expand their development so that they can also help to lead this work. Continuing those partnerships with community agencies, like I said, staff development is another major area that we know that we're going to have to continue with ongoing assessment of what our staff needs and how we provide those needs. And then our monthly meeting with NEA leadership. We also just met today, we started our SEL DLT committee and, and to decide what is that going to look like? Because we, we know that it needs some work from the people who participated last year. So we met and, you know, we talked about how can we strategically come up with a tool that's going to help us have meaningful work? And what are the outcomes that we really want in the end, right? And so we talked about this sustainability piece is huge because we can't be the keepers of the information, right? The people that come to the leadership team or the DLT committee can't be the keepers of all of this knowledge. We have to find a way to get the information to staff and be able to sustain it into our buildings. Because teachers are really the ones that spend the majority of the time with our students. So we're really trying to figure out what are the root causes of some of these, you know, behaviors that we're seeing. And we really firmly believe that the, the whole child framework is going to give us, you know, some talking points or things that we need to look at. And will also provide us quality professional development from an external facilitator that is of no charge to us because we have been selected to be a part of this pilot. And in my opinion, the, the professional development that they're offering us is top-notch, ASCD, you know, they're a well-known organization. So it really is a great opportunity for us to participate in this. And we look forward to, you know, utilizing these, these principles. And that concludes.
I'll just mention one other thing, that there's times also when it takes us some time to find out about a child. You know, frankly, in the, in the last several weeks, we've had some students enroll, we've had some students return to our, our schools because they've heard the hashtag change the narrative. And it takes us time then to find out about this student. So the student might come to us with, with some needs that we're not aware of because many times their record does not follow them right away. The parent has everything they need to enroll the child, but the record from the school doesn't come. And the other thing we have found that some of the records that come are not complete. So it takes us time then to find out, you know, about this child. And if interventions are needed or any type of programs, we then work through with the, the parent and the staff to make sure that happens. So that's occurred as of late also.
Is, is there any law that requires districts to send their records when the student leaves their district?
It's supposedly done in a timely manner. Obviously, that's abroad. So if it doesn't happen, which my, my wife kind of lives this all the time as a building secretary, then, you know, there's a follow-up phone call and all those things. But, yeah.
Well, thank you for staying on it. Obviously, I think we, we still need to, to make sure that everything we've talked about actually is happening. I've heard some bad things followed up by some good things, which shows me that the reactions have been different this year. I still ask people through the proper chain of commands to, if you see something that's not working, let us know. We, we need to fix this. I agree with you that we are heading in the right direction, we're trending in the right direction, if you will. But we're not done. Just make sure that every, and I love that you said that the, the expectations are being communicated clearly in terms of how unacceptable behavior should be dealt with. And I also want to make sure at the other end of the equation that the restorative practices, we're setting aside time for that. It's, I believe in the whole equation. I don't believe in just half of it on either end. So I appreciate it. And if there are problems or there are successes, we need to know about that and what to keep doing and what to, to really focus on even more.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Razey, you talked about sometimes we're getting a student and their record's not complete. That's because the previous district either didn't send us the records right away. That's a one problem. And then maybe the child should have been on an IEP that was either not done or not completed, or we're diagnosing them, or seeing something different is what you're?
Yeah, I didn't want to allude to the IEP, but, yeah, yeah, so you picked up.
There might be some stuff
Exactly, that's right.
That was left out that didn't follow the student or?
That's correct. Or maybe they didn't.
They didn't have the resources to fulfill it, whatever.
That's exactly right. Yep.
Okay. Are we, when we get it, an intake or a new student, do we, obviously immediately you're looking for the records, but we're just assuming those records are correct? Am I to assume that? We're also assuming those records are filled out correctly? And the child gets enrolled and we continue that those records are correct when they get to us? And then this child, until we see something that's wrong, we just, we do our diligence then, correct?
Yes. So what happens there then is, you know, like, oh, didn't expect that. So a phone call many times is made then to that district or organization that maybe the child came from. And we say, hey, you know, we haven't gotten the records yet, or we have them and we're seeing some things that, you know, we're not seeing. Can you give us, you know, some information about this child, correct?
So there isn't a full diagnostic or a full overview of a child done, other than when we see a behavior, then we go into reaction mode at that point?
At that point, yes. But then if it reaches to a level, a team can be called, the group of folks to meet about the child and determine what the best course of action would be, a team meeting, and where something could be employed right away. If it's, if it's something where we think it's going to jeopardize something, yes.
Okay. Because I'm, I mean, I'm assuming, I don't know how many kids you're talking about were coming in, I'm assuming it's not time productive to sit there and evaluate every student that comes in because most students wouldn't need
That is correct.
Have needs, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then the ones that do, they probably already have some paperwork that says what their needs are, but not fully, sometimes it's not fully what they need.
No, it's one, one hundred.
All right.
Yes.
We do have information on students who leave us and didn't want to come back. And I think the law doesn't require us to accept that student. Is that, did you tell me that or did I?
If they, you know, if they live in the, in our, unless they've gone through the disciplinary process, they are welcome to come back to the Marion City Schools. So unless something's happened with them in the other district. So if they've been suspended or expelled from the other district, especially expulsion, then any district in the state of Ohio has a right of refusal for that student to enter our district. So.
Years ago, it used to be if a student was going to be expelled, they had a window. They could go back to another school without it being like a real expulsion. And I don't know if that's still a thing.
Yeah, I would say unless that was written within some sort of the district guidelines or something, that probably not. And, and again, unless it was that, that option of the receiving district. Because you're, you're not required, it's a no if it's a weapon, any type of weapon.
Right.
It's a year, one calendar year actually, not a school year. It's the option for a district to receive a child from another district or, or a private or non-public, we say, for a district to receive that child, depending on the act. The district can work with the family or not work with it, depending. And a lot of times we'll look at it and say, okay, do we have the resources for this? You know, do we want to take that on, the chance? And then again, maybe a child needs a second chance, again, depending on what it is. So we've got to be really careful.
Right.
And the rule is different for residential versus non-residential students.
Correct. Yes.
And you're evaluating those case by case?
Yes.
I take it.
It's going to be very important moving forward.
And like, I'm sure we do our assessment to your point as to what their needs are or whatever. But I guess my question would be, do we, is there any conversation that we have concerning why they left in the first place? Is it because, you know, a babysitter or because this school has X and we didn't have X or whatever? So if we have this dumping of these children into our district, I guess my concern is, why did they leave in the second place, in the first place? And then secondly, why do they think it's going to be different when they come back?
Yep, you're right. They leave for a lot of different reasons, everything you just mentioned. So.
Okay. We'll turn now to the treasurer's report. And item A is approval of our board minutes from October 3rd and 17th. Do I have a motion?
So move. I'll second.
Discussion.
On the 17th minute, there's a slight typo, third page, it should be the second paragraph is, why is there a shortage in that paragraph? Third sentence from the bottom is too big and too many, not and, it's A and G. It's just slight typo, but I saw it because I read through it.
Third page, second page?
Yeah, third page, second paragraph, there's a third line from the bottom of the end of that paragraph. The line is too big and it, right now reads A and G where it should just be and.
Gotcha.
But minus that, I didn't see any problems.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Call the law, please.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Widling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Ms. McKay?
Yes.
Going on to item B, financial approvals. Motion to approve the final, the following financial items. October financial reports as presented, including checks written, fund
October financial reports as presented, including checks written, fund balances and financial statements. A thousand dollars from Thomas K. Kenny, AmeriPrize Financial Services LLC for Cornelius Green, visiting with students at McKinley and participating in an assembly and community concert event. Thirty-five hundred from James and Barb Grieheim for the flying company Vertigo Theatrical Flying for the High School Musical. Seventy-five dollars from Barclay Construction for an ad in the high school musical program. Five iPads from Matthews Auto Group to the high school athletic department. And a hundred cases of sanitizing wipes from Josh Daniels and companies. Do I have a motion?
So move. Second.
Discussion.
Yeah. Mr. Treasurer, on this sheet here, like, it says other local revenue and we're down 236.7% from last October to this October. Do you know, I mean, do you know why?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that last year, last fiscal year, we received two Medicaid settlements. One in July and one sort of like in March. This year, we haven't received that yet.
Okay.
We've been approved to receive it, but we probably won't get it until January.
Okay. So when it says other local revenue, that's what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Is some Medicaid settlements?
Yes.
We expect that number, it might be down, but less than 236.
Correct. Correct. Yep. That's probably more of a timing thing than anything thing.
Okay.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. All right. Motion carried. So now we come to item C, the five-year forecast. It is recommended that the board approve the five-year forecast for fiscal year '23 through '27 as presented. And you'll see the four attachments there. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I have a.
This is, this is the show.
Long presentation for this. So this is our, the month that we do our forecast and we submit for this year. So I'm going to kind of go through where we're at and kind of retrace back to May of last year. And actually, Mr. Massey is going to jump in here for a little bit of this too. But I want to be kind of simple about this. First off, it's always really important in our district to know the basic breakdown of where our revenues come from. We get taxes, we get money from the state, and we get money locally. You know, the biggest thing that you should always remember or keep in mind here is we get almost 80% of our funding from the state of Ohio. Why that's important is every, we only get a budget every two years. So every two years, what we're getting from the state can change. We are in the second year of a budget cycle from the state. So it's really important this spring that we keep an eye on that, that our budget isn't going to drastically change or we're going to have any significant changes in that. Because again, you know, when 80% of your revenues come from the state, if they would cut you 10%, that's a pretty significant number in our funding. Also, if they would increase this by 10%, it'd be a big number in our funding. Some important things for this, this, this year's budget. This year was a reappraisal in Marion County. So in calendar year '22, property values were assessed. That will be collected in '23. Our values in Marion City School District increased by about $69 million, which will give us about a little over $200,000 more if, if we collect it at 100%. The only increase that comes from local taxation is the inside millage. And our inside millage is 3.3 mils. So while there's other, other levies passed and all that, that will not generate any extra funds for us. It's only the inside millage that an increase in valuation increase affects. Likewise, if our values go down, your revenues will go down because of that inside millage. Our local taxes also include what the state gives us from our homestead enrollment back and casino taxes. And then I just wanted to point out that even though this isn't part of this forecast, we did pay off our bond levy that was passed for all of our schools. We just paid that last week. So we have no debt, no longer have any debt for any of the buildings in the district. And so the taxpayers won't be paying on that debt any longer. So, so that's going to roll off everybody's tax roll. So our total local taxes are about $10.5 million for this year. The next big, or the biggest source of revenue is our state funding. So there was a phase in, there was a whole new formula passed last year. It's a phase in. Last fiscal year, they phased it in at 16.6% of what we should be getting. We're in year two, which is now 33.3% of what we should be getting. So that, you know, they do a calculation, they say, hey, you should get this much money, but we're not going to give it to you all at the same time. So they're phasing it in. That, so that was two years of phase in for the basic money we should get. We also get DPIA money, which basically is a new name for economically disadvantaged funds. While, while the calculation of what we should get was calculated last year, we did receive no extra money last year. This year, it's being phased in at 14%. So this is our first year of that phased in. Through this forecast, I have assumed that we will continue the phase in as the state had promised us. Again, we'll find out in June if they really follow through on that. Indicators would seem that they will because our state revenue is.
Pretty flush.
Pretty, yeah, they're pretty flush right now. And then the only other thing that I keep wanting reminding us, when you look at the forecast, we no longer get money in for open enrollment. Any child that comes to our district that we're educating, the state just looks at them like they're our student, not, not River Valley student paying us money to educate that kid. So the total amount of money we're getting from the state is just a little over $43 million. And then our other local funding includes things like, we do get tuition for the excess cost of kids. I know I just said that the state doesn't look at open enrollment, but they do still look at kids who are on an IEP, who are open enrolled, and you still have to pay the district of residents the excess amount that it costs to educate that kid. So we get money in and we have to pay money out for those kids. So other local revenue includes that, it includes interest, it includes our Medicaid funding, and then some other smaller items like preschool tuition, donations, rebates, miscellaneous things. We, a few years ago, not last year, but a few years ago, we got some BWC rebates and that was in here. So this year, we're, we think it's going to be about a million dollars. So our total revenues, this is just a small chart showing kind of how our revenues are increasing over the years. And you can just see, and it's really hard to see in here, is this yellow line right here. This used to be our open enrollment revenue. That's gone right there. But then our state revenue went up a little bit because of those kids. So this did go up a little bit, plus the phase in of the new funding. Then we have our expenses. So also in a budget like ours, the majority of our budget, seven, 80, over 80%, almost 85%, or excuse me, 80% is our salaries and benefits. Obviously, we're in a service business. We're here to educate kids and we're all about the people that have to do that. Moving on from that, then we have our services. And I talk a little bit about what our top services are that we pay for. We have supplies. We transfer some money to other funds like our capital fund. And then we have like an all other category, which would include things like our audit, some of the debt we have for House Bill 264 projects. So our expenses for this year are expected to be just under $53 million. So if I go back to the revenues, I said we were going to get in 54, almost 55 million. Though I'll, I'll give you a better picture of that later. So in our expenses, when we look at our salaries and benefits in this forecast, we have an MEA negotiated agreement through 2025, so we know what those salary increases are going to be. We also, we are going to negotiate OFC this year. So our, our classified salaries are pretty much just for their step increases because we don't know what that percentage increase is going to be yet. So the salaries and benefits are reflective of the agreement. And then in our benefits this year, we did have an increase in our medical insurance. It went up seven and a half percent. And we went from having two annual premium holidays to one. So going forward in the forecast, I put in only one premium holiday per year. I put the increase in at about five and a half percent because that's what the consortium had done. But I, I think it's important to know, if we would have two premium holidays, we would save half a million dollars. So, you know, that could be a big swing in the forecast long-term. With two premium holidays, you know, extrapolated over the course of four years is a big difference than one. So just, just information you need to know with assumptions. So our salaries and benefits are just about 41 and a half million dollars. So then the next biggest category of things that we spend money on are services. So services are things that we go out and buy and we use in the district. Sometimes it could be people, sometimes it could be, you know, like our utilities or whatever. So the biggest thing that we do is we have ESPs, we have to hire some speech and language services and some other educational needs. That's, that's 800 and some thousand dollars. We have to get our OTs and PTs, that's about 850. I talked about excess costs for open enrollment. This is the cost of the kids leaving our district that have IEPs that we have to pay other districts for is about 750. Our electric costs and, you know, obviously, not just in schools, but everywhere, our utility costs are going up. Our electricity this year for the district should be about 700,000. While the state did increase some of our revenues, they also put in the bill that of the special ed funding that we get, we have to pay 10% back to the state to help fund catastrophic cost program they have. We have to pay almost $400,000 back to the state. And this year, we paid 400 into that program, we got 200 back. So it wasn't really a great, great, great win on our part, but that is also a cost that we have to pay. Students placed out of the district, so that's kids that might have special needs that we have to send them to, you know, other educational facilities. And then sometimes they're in court placed, they, or might be in a live-in facility. Our subs, we have to pay for them, we use a service for that. That's just under, going to be about a little under $400,000 this year. And then tuitions to other districts, I'm sorry, this would be, include our court placed and some other students that have needs. Probably these kids are leaving not because the district determined they should leave, the courts determined they should leave. So our total services are seven and a half million dollars in this year's budget. Supplies includes things like software, you know, all the kinds of educational needs that kids can touch and hold, bearings, grounds, our maintenance supplies, our transportation, our fuel for buses and our technology supplies, which we assume this ought to be about one and a half million. I will say that our, our fuel for buses has almost doubled over the course of the last two years, which obviously, everybody knows that, just from your personal life. So this is just a little chart of where our expenses is. So obviously, our biggest is salaries and benefits, then we have services, and then the next several categories, you know, these top are just a small amount, but our capital are other expenses and transfers. And that's kind of how it looks across, across the forecast. Thing is important, when you look at this chart right here, we can't forget that from '24 to '25, our federal COVID funds are gone. And this, this jump reflects the items that are, that we're funding through the CARES Act that would be going back to the general fund as expenses. And that's what the rest of the presentation is going to talk about. So I'm going to flash back to May of last year. So we talked about having to avoid federal funds hangover. So when we got our COVID money, that money allowed us to do so much for our district. It allowed us to preserve our general fund. So basically, our general fund has grown because of this. We have been able to provide a lot of additional resources to the district and make major investments in the district. We received seven different kinds of CARES Act, and I'm going to talk about each one of them, but, but they're listed right there, so I'm going to, I'm going to keep going on that. We had several goals when we started budgeting and trying to figure out what to do with this money. So obviously, we wanted to bridge learning gaps from the pandemic, wanted to make sure we had good technology, not just for our students, but also our staff. We had to make sure our infrastructure within all the buildings could support all that technology. We wanted to ensure that, you know, the safety and security of our students and staff were insured. We then wanted to make sure our curriculum was up to date and was up to grade, up to date from K through 12. We can't use this money for pre-K. So from K through 12, we made sure, you know, trying to really look at what, what kind of education we're delivering to our kids. We wanted to make upgrades to buildings that fit within the parameters of these grants. We provided extensive professional development, provided quite a few additional opportunities for our students. And then we also, again, wanted to sustain fiscal health for the district. So each COVID recovery fund had different parameters to follow. So the first one we got were called CRF funds. That happened in the spring of 2020, right during the pandemic. That was provided to us to provide PPE and to prevent the COVID spread, COVID spread. We got $255,000. And with that money, I don't know if you guys remember, we bought like those backpack sprayers that the custodians could go around and spray the rooms, bought tons of PPE, remember? Again, everybody had to wear masks, we were going through them like they were candy. But that's what that money was spent on. That was spent fairly quickly and, but provided a huge need at that time because it, obviously at that time, we're like, how are we even going to be able to open school without some of these supports? Then we received broadband connectivity fund. Our original grant was for 151,000. Then after that, we received two more rounds of funding for this and it's a reimbursement. And it's a reimbursement to help kids continue to stay, to have Wi-Fi devices when they leave school. So their little MiFi devices that they can take home and they're still able to, you know, do homework on their computer or their Chromebook at home. So, so we do provide those through a reimbursement of Verizon. Then we started rolling into S R funds. The first funds we got were 1.78 million dollars. And those were initially to help implement the return to school. So we used those funds initially to support technology because at that time, some of these are scars when I talk, I think about it, but we, we're completely remote learning. The kids were hybrid learning. So we used those in fiscal year '21 and '22. We bought educational software to be able to have remote learning. We brought Chromebooks, we brought, bought PPE, and we were able to provide salaries and services for technology. Then we got S R two funds. Wow, we got another 7.7 million dollars in thought. This is the best thing ever. That money goes through fiscal year '23. Now, these funds had different parameters than the rest of the other grants that we had. There were 15 things that you could use this money for, and I'm going to show you what they are, but I'm not going to read them all. So every single expenditure we had in S R two and S R three had to follow one of the parameters in here. So when you're budgeting and you say, I'm going to spend, I would like to spend $100,000 to put lights in the football field. Well, that is not an allowable expense, so can't do it. But I want to spend $100,000 to put a new chiller in Grant, which wasn't 100, it was 500, that is an allowable expense. So like, everything had to be analyzed. Does it fit in here? Doesn't it fit in here? And does it fit the goals that we had for these funds when we started? The same parameters were for the ARP and S R funds. So these came in probably February of '21, because this was after the election. Yeah, '21. So we got 17.5 million from this round, and those last till the end of fiscal year '24. So whenever I keep talking about the money's going away in '24, this is the last set of funds that we have. They have same parameters as S R one. And again, careful consideration is also going into what those expenditures are, how much of those things are going to have to be carried forward, and how much of the things that we can use that on one time, things that we wouldn't be able to do otherwise. So you've got this presentation in your handbook, but you can look at, at the things that we could spend this money on. And there were 15 of them. And again, I'm not going to go over them all, but they're all in here. So again, we have to look at everything. Every time we want to do something, we had to look at it. So what we used our money, our funds for was we pay for salaries and benefits of employees. This is where we buy the supplies at the beginning of the year, so that parents don't have to go out and buy supplies for their kids. We provide them through the CARES Act. We have really amped up our summer school and that was for, you know, learning laws. We bought some industrial maintenance equipment. We bought classroom furniture. We're still buying classroom furniture. We did a project here at the high school for temperature controls. We bought a bunch of new motors and controls throughout the district. We increased, improved our servers and infrastructure of technology. We did a lot of letters PD and training and gave stipends for those people who completed that. We did our entire CKLA pilot and purchased all the curriculum out of this. At one point in time, we paid stipends for all the employees for work they had done for the return to work. We did a lot of educational technology for online learning. We bought Chromebooks, Chromebook chargers and staff technology. Those are all updated and now everybody's one-to-one and we do a rotation each. Those are all updated and now everybody's one-to-one and we do a rotation each year out of here. We purchased an SEL screener. We are buying new library books for each building over the course of these funds. We're doing literacy intervention. We bought PPE. We bought supplemental textbooks and curriculum as we found was needed in different buildings. We were able to open and operate the WEC out of these funds. We're doing literacy coaching. We will shortly have Ben Qs in every classroom throughout the district. We're buying a sound system, PA system. We're hopefully gonna get a new phone system during hall monitors, piece rooms. We're looking at math curriculum this year. We're hoping that we'll be able to fit in all new chillers and HVAC improvements in all the buildings. We worked the harding career counseling into this, which was the old gear up. We have some ESPs that will be coming out of here because some of the grants that we are using will take out of here until this is gone. We, the tech department had some additional needs that we're purchasing and then we're also getting super subs out of here. To finish up on the S R funds, we also received homeless one and two, which was two hundred, almost two hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. With those funds, we were able to provide mental health services, emergency housing for homeless students to help support their basic supplies and needs and some additional ESP supports. These are done at the end of this school year. And then we got another two hundred fifty-five thousand for IDEA, which is, pre-K through twelve special needs. And we were able to pay for a transition coordinator, professional development, continue to provide goodwill training for our students and another ESP with supports and supplies. So this is a summary of all the money that we got from S R. Some of it has been expended the first to have. Round two of the CARES Act ends in fiscal year twenty-three. Round three of CARES Act ends in fiscal year twenty-four. And both our homeless and IDA ends this year. All of that money is twenty-six, twenty-seven point six million dollars. And then in addition, we received the broadband connectivity and that is a reimbursement based on what we spend to help the kids stay connected. So fiscal year twenty-five in this forecast reflects an influx of money of items that we've identified are not one-time purchases. They're programs that we would like to continue to exist. We need to evaluate if they need to continue to exist. But if nothing changes and if we, if we take no programs away that we're currently doing period, top to bottom, it would be a five point nine addition to the forecast. And you can see that when you, when we get to the cash balance at the end. So, you know, what you do have to remember is that our S R funds really allowed us to make investments in our facilities, to provide a lot of educational opportunities for our kids and to provide supports for our students and our staff. We have done so much in the last couple of years that, that we wouldn't have been able to do, or we would've had to make some hard choices, harder choices than what we did. So Steve's gonna hop in here for a little bit to talk about how we're gonna analyze these things and what we're, what we're gonna do over the course of the next two, year and a half, I guess, to address those.
Thank you. So as this, as the board knows, the, the two positions in the district that report directly to the board are the treasurer and superintendent. She doesn't report to me, I don't report to her and the offices are kept separate for purposes frankly, just for this reason as far as the expenditure of dollars. However, what I will say, uh, in successful districts, which I think when you look over time at what Veronica has presented and then I had the opportunity to look at some previous five-year forecasts, the district has done extremely well. And again, this is coming from a person who came here as a, as a neutral person, just seeing things for the first time to, you know, have poised yourself where you are now. Where the superintendent and the treasurer really need to work together are these items that have just, that you've seen. And that's the expenditure of, of district dollars of taxpayer money, you know? And what I, I say to people all the time when I see things is, would you do that if that was your personal checking account? And that's what people have to, have to remember when, when we're spending taxpayer dollars. So, you know, the, the presentation, you know, what I hear is first, when you're getting federal and state dollars, you always have to prepare for what might be down the road. You know, you can't just assume that's coming in all the time. And as Veronica alluded to, we knew, we, districts knew way in advance that this time was coming. And so what I hear is, you know, if, if districts, businesses, because businesses got COVID dollars also, as we know, and a lot of different entities is that if you didn't have twenty-four, twenty-five circled on your calendar, you were not planning ahead, unlike what the Marion City Schools did. So, uh, so again, this is one of those areas as far as the budget where the treasurer and superintendent have to work really close to make sure that it is positioning itself for, for the future. And I think we all have to remember is that the items that were put into place for our students and staff really had a direct positive effect on, on this district. You know, when I look at that and when I looked at it previous to this and I saw, you know, the things that were put in place, the mental health staff, the intervention, the ongoing support of personnel, uh, the equipment that was purchased, you know, all those things are important to a district. And, and guess what? We got them through CARES Act money. You know, you didn't have to, neither did other districts have to dig into their, to their general fund. So that, so that's a good thing. But as we all know and as Veronica's pointing towards now, we have to move forward and we have to decide how we're gonna move forward. So this was a big part of what I did previous to coming to, to Marion. As, as you know, when I was brought on board, I'd, you know, been a superintendent, but for the last seven years I was the executive director of HR for the eleventh largest district in the state. And so our budget for, for services, programs, which obviously is personnel was, um, a little over eighty percent of the district's budget. So it was an, obviously an important piece of what we had to do. So when you look at all of this and if the data is showing it as far as what effect these programs, equipment's kind of something different, you know? When you look at a one-time purchase of chillers, but when you look at purchases of technology, for instance, and you look at the data, which you really need to do. And, and frankly, I heard it loud and clear my first board meeting, that we have a lot of contracts with different entities. So all of those things need looked over with a fine tooth comb, under a microscope as far as what's the return of investment for our district moving forward? And somebody brought it up and it might even been Mr. Ratliff. You know, if it's that important to the district and we're in a one-year contract and it's something that data is showing that we can maybe get a discounted rate by going into a three-year contract, because we're looking at that over time and the impact it's having on students and staff and that we plan on continuing something like that, then why isn't that being, being looked at? And so that needs to be really looked at hard and, and that's part of our plan. And, and we have meetings set up to go over every single one of those. And Olympia has asked for all the data on the usage of all those things. So you can be assured we're gonna do that. So again, pointing towards we can't wait, that, that would be irresponsible of us. And if you hear anything tonight, it's gotta be data-driven decision-making moving forward. Again, the biggest impact is our programs is, as you saw, salary and benefits. So we have to look at all that moving forward, all, all the programs, which mean people, as we talked earlier about even the discipline, a program is people, okay? So we have to look at staffing moving forward and that doesn't mean cuts or ripping or anything like that, but it's gotta be a systematic look at it and at everything, the class sizes, the programs, making sure we're intentional in all aspects of staffing from. And when you look at staffing, you have to look at who you're bringing on, how many years' experience do they have? What degree do they have? Because again, when you look at our pay chart, all that matters. So you bring on somebody with five, seven, eight, ten years' experience, depending on what we need. And they have a bachelor's or a bachelor's one fifty or a master's, master's fifteen. Of course, now you have master's thirty. That comes with a price. So you have to look at all of that. And what I was always taught is you, you better look at an average, okay? So if you wanna hit fifty thousand, if you're hiring X amount of people above that, you better hire X amount of people below it. And you have to look at what they're coming in with years, what they're coming in with degree, status. Again, whether it's a BA, masters, masters fifteen and thirty, because all that is impactful to the district. The other thing that plays into it is again, why I don't believe that because of the, the healthy spot the district is in, is that this is all through, more through attrition and looking at those different programs and looking at the class sizes across the district, okay? What does that look like? It's a little easier at the elementary frankly, uh, because you have X amount of teachers, you have X amount of kids. We have aspirational goals within the contract. It gets a little harder, although we're gonna do it, we're gonna start earlier. Marion has a, um, contract, if you will, with a servicing organization called Cardonics, which helps with scheduling. And within that scheduling, you can look at what are class sizes looking like? What are programs looking like and so forth and so on? And you can, you can see those things kind of in real time as students schedule that and, and those classes are filling up. So it's a broad look at everything, whether you, you know, whether you wanna call it, use the old horizontally and perpendicular or not. But it's these things that I think will need to be looked at moving forward with intention in mind as far as what's gonna put this district in the best shape moving forward and in the most healthy financial situation it can be. And again, because it's taxpayer money and we have to be keenly aware of that. So I think if we look at the programs, if we look at the attrition rate where we're at, we look at what can be sustainable as far as those programs that affect kids, those, the contracts that as, once we get the data, what does that look like as far as their usage? And what impact is it having, uh, on our student body and our staff? Then I think we can get to a place where we can determine then what is relevant to the district and what do we need to focus on? And, you know, Veronica kind of pointed out earlier is that, and again, that we have to ensure a healthy fiscal outlook while maintaining necessary and needed opportunities for students, because that's what we do. We're service organization.
So, and this might be too general of a question. Who is likely to set those parameters by which we evaluate these programs? And I, I know you've said let, if the data shows it, right? Are we even that far along yet where we know specifically what categories or what improvements we're looking for?
Yeah, great question. No, I, I think we are and can be that far actually, because the reports will show that. You know, these are, these are a lot of programs that are being used, they're technology-based. So we can find out, you know, what is being used, to what extent, how often? And again, I can't remember exactly, but I know there was discussion around some of the programs even being used. And one of them was weekly, um, I don't think it was a weekly. Yeah, I think that was it. And you even talked about that. So even a program like that, okay, you know, we started this year off. We got some great input from the board, so now that needs looked at. And so that's been on a radar. Those contracts frankly have been on the radar since day one, that long list that was at that, that meeting. And it'll take time, but we feel we can get the information that, that we need from our different departments. When you say who, it's gonna be collective. It's gotta be, you know, from, from the principals to the staff member, you know? Is this being used to what extent? Is it impactful on students? Hopefully it's just not, um, you know, hey, go work on this for a while and I'm gonna be up at my desk type of deal, you know? Let's just say it that way. And so the, the important ones that are truly making a difference, I think we really need to look at versus the other. So I think we do have the time.
I think one of the important things that we talked about in finance committee and we spent two and a half hours working through this forecast. If you look at our cash balance in 2020, it was fourteen million dollars. In 2021, it was fifteen million dollars. What Mrs. Reinhardt said about the CARES money enabling us to save some of our general fund money and put it in the bank, we've done that. And so now our cash balance in 2024 shows twenty million dollars. So we've increased it from twenty. In just those four years, we've gone up six million dollars in our cash balance. So that's how you can handle some deficit spending, but we don't do deficit spending. We, we have been not deficit spending for a lot of years now and we don't wanna do that. But you take away the CARES money and those supplanted salaries that CARES money has been paying, that's why you, you show a deficit spending in year 2025. But again, in 2025, we still have fourteen million dollars in the cash balance. So that twenty million, and I think you said it in our meeting, is a lot of money to, to be carrying over. And but, and I think as Mr. Massey said, we, we need to be intentional going forward to take that delta and make sure we don't have deficit spending in 2025. And that's our goal. And we'll certainly be, you know, that's part of the finance committee, part of the board, all the people you spoke of will be having input into those, those programs. So I, I think overall, we're very healthy financially.
Yeah, yeah.
Despite that deficit in twenty-five, that, that is because the CARES money and supplanting the general fund with that.
And you have to remember, um, so this shows the cash balance from twenty-two to twenty-seven, right? But you, you know, this assumes we do nothing. This assumes we look at no programs, we don't, we don't react to anything and we do everything exactly the same as today. And I think that at the end of the day, what we're trying to say is we're going to make sure, like if that is where we end up, that every single thing we do is what we need to do, then it's a different conversation we have in a couple of years. But again, I think using data and finding out, are these programs working? Aren't they working? Does this all make sense? Should we be shifting what we need in different ways? Like when I came here, so it was fiscal year sixteen, there was zero discussion about, um, piece rooms.
But Madam Treasurer, shouldn't we have been doing that the whole time?
Well, no, we have been.
Like, I don't understand why now of a sudden, in 2025, we're showing we're gonna be at a loss of almost six million dollars. And we sit up here and say, well, now we're gonna come up with an evaluation of programs. We should be evaluating programs before we sign anything every time. I've been preaching that since at least day one. So at least when I came on, that's all I've been talking about. And we continually are now saying, well, we're seeing six million. I think for the past several years, I know Mr. Massey has just gotten here, so is the assistant superintendent. But this district, for years before they got here, has operated with this COVID money not on a, as a need basis, but as a wish list instead of, and now we're gonna face in two years, we're gonna face a six million dollar deficit.
Well, I think.
So we'll only operate for three years before we're in the hole.
Yeah, so I don't think it's fair to say that we just willy-nilly spent money. There were a lot of needs that came up very rapidly and very quickly.
I'm not even gonna go back through the list, but I can give you a whole bunch that we just willy-nilly spent since I've been here. But I'm saying right now, we gotta go forward with six million. So we're being disingenuous to the public by acting like this is not some SOS nine-one-one. We're basically saying within two years, six million dollars has gotta be cut out of our budget. And that's gonna either be staff or programs, period.
That's not true.
Where are you gonna find it? Cause I'm looking at the forecast.
Twenty million dollars we have in our bank, in our account over previous years.
I appreciate that. At, at a six million dollars, we can last till 2028 and then we're in the hole.
Well, as Dr. Mr. Massey said, we're not gonna let that happen.
Well, unless a magical fairy comes along, yes, we're letting that happen. I see the numbers. That's what all the projections are. I mean, to say that that's not true, Ted, you're not looking at the number. I'm looking at the number. And we, I understand we now have to go into, hey, let's evaluate each and every program. But I believe we should've been doing that and that we can't go back in the past. But this board has been willy-nilly with numbers. There's no doubt about it, or we wouldn't be facing, we wouldn't have right now over six million dollars of program we can't afford.
Well, I, I'm not sure you were paying attention, but over these, the time you've been on, all the time you've been on the board, a good ninety percent of the expenditures we made, probably more than ninety percent, have come from this CARES money, not from our capital, not from our general fund. Is that fair to say that?
Fair to say.
Well, wherever you're getting, I don't care what fund you're getting, okay? You You could talk about it's local tax money, you could talk about it's state tax money or federal, it's all tax money. So it's all coming from the taxpayer, and we haven't taken care of it, we just haven't. And you can go over like, we're helping a business, and I, I railed about it, we're helping a business start counseling services, which we definitely need, and we took $10,000 out of the homeless kids fund to start it. I don't think that was proper use of money, but we voted for one to do it.
That's, that's all grant money, that's all CARES money.
I get it. You can, you can start programs, you, we can pay salaries out of CARES.
If we had not spent that CARES money for those programs.
We would have more in general.
And for the health of our students, we would have sent that money back to the federal government.
Well, in two years from now.
And some other school district would have been able to use it. I think we used it appropriately.
Okay, well, in two years from now, we're going to have to figure out.
Our general fund is very, very healthy.
We're going to have to figure out, fine, if you want to use the general fund and deplete that in three years, or in five years from now, because we have two years and then we start at $6 million a pop, and actually it goes to, in 2027, what is it, almost $6.5 million, we're in the deficit. We have to cut program. There's not going to be no doubt about it.
Well, attrition, and, and as we went, met, and perhaps you should sit down with Mrs. Reinhardt, because we spent two and a half hours going through this discussion about the things that can be done, so that we're not at that, that nut in five, at 25.
We should have already been doing them.
Pardon me?
We should have already been doing them. So if we want to start now, I'm happy that you guys are finally coming to start. And I appreciate everything he said, and I think he's directly on point. We should have been evaluating every program before we put it in the classroom to begin with, or in the school, or whatever. It should, all of this stuff, when we're spending tax money, should be evaluated whether we need it or we don't need it, and when teachers aren't using it, we should be cutting it, for sure. But we keep spending like it's an endless supply of money, and we're seeing from the numbers, it's not.
Wait, I just wish you'd.
I mean, you can laugh about it all you want, but we're going to be, I understand numbers, Ted, I'm looking at them.
No, no, I don't think you understand what's behind these numbers. We spent CARES money, we did not spend general fund money. And to say it was spent recklessly, you just saw the list of the, the very valuable things that produce for this district and our students. You ran on, it's for the kids. Everything we did up there is for the kids. And, and so I can't see where you're saying we depleted the general fund, we have not depleted the general fund.
We haven't, we've used, we've used CARES Act money so you don't have to use general fund money.
Correct.
Okay, right?
Right.
But if you inappropriately use the money, you inappropriately lose the money. I don't care if it's CARES Act or here.
What you have to look at whenever you spend money like the CARES Act is sustainability. And as Mr. Massey said, we're going to look at sustainability of those programs.
No, we're going to cut programs at some point.
Some of them were one-time expenditures, many of them were one-time expenditures. And now we're looking at long-term sustainability, and I, I think, and over the years, I've seen it done, we're, that's not a terrible nut to crack.
And I, you know, I'll go back to when we got this CARES Act money. What have you heard for the last three years for me?
We've said it every time there's been a forecast, yeah. This is nothing new.
And I'm saying too, our Finance Committee is Ted and Kelly. I think Mr. Ratliff should be on the, since he's so good with numbers, how can we make that happen, for him to be on that Finance Committee since?
Being on the committee, Ms. Dyer, does not mean.
Well, you have a bigger.
You have to approve it at a Board meeting. So every Board member has to review what we're approving. Like, for instance, tonight, we have a coach somewhere on here where we, we're going to do a life coach project for our teachers. I mean, those are not priorities among, they're not priorities helping the students.
Well, I'm just saying, because you're so vocal on finance. I, I think that, you know, you have some relevant points, but as you present them and bring them, I think a good place for you would be on this Finance Committee so that if you're so passionate about some of these things, you know, then you can report those back to the Board, you know? So I know Kelly is on the Finance Committee, and I think, you know, when we do committee reporting, as Board members, those are the important voices that we need to have in, in these groups. So if you're passionate about it, maybe, you know, being on that committee might be a great place for you.
Well, I think anybody can go to the Treasurer anytime and talk to the Finance.
Okay, I'm going to finish this report, so. So here's just a chart of our cash balance at this point. And then I'm going to show you cash days. So the, the standard is to be above 60 cash days. So we don't fall below 60 until fiscal year '26, and we never fall into a deficit cash balance, which we have had many forecasts, you know, not known state funds that have in the past. So that, that's it. I, I don't know if anybody has any further questions on this, but that's, that's where we stand in fall '22.
And all these Treasurer reports and stuff people can see on the website, I mean, they are for, I'm just letting everybody know, if they want to see any of this, they can get on the website and view it themselves.
All right, sure. So we have a motion on the floor. Let's call a roll.
Ms. Dyer?
What was the motion?
To approve the forecast.
Okay, yes.
Thank you. Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McCann?
Yes, motion carried. We come now to the hearing of the public. Board of Education recognizes the value to school governance of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. Public participation is a time set aside for the Board to listen to public comments, but it is not intended as a time for dialogue. The Board offers public participation to members of the public in accordance with the procedures below. The Board applies these procedures to all speakers and does not discriminate based on the identity of the speaker, content of the speech, or viewpoint of the speaker. And there you see a list. I would remind everyone that this is a business meeting. And I do have one person who filled out the form, and that is Mark Butler, if you would like to come to the podium, and you do have three minutes. Yeah, is it Mark?
Yeah. Okay, good, good evening, Board members, Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent. Again, my name is Mark Butler, and I'm a substitute teacher, and I was, excuse me, formerly a substitute teacher with Marion City School, specifically at Marion Grant Middle School. I chose to make a commitment over the summer after speaking with Johnny Jackson to come into this district with passion and with commitment to serve the young people at Grant Middle School this year. Now, I want to quote a, a phrase that's currently on your website. It reads, "Marion City Schools is looking for reliable and dedicated substitutes to support our schools. If you have a desire to make a difference in your community, we want you to join our team." Now, beginning of the school year, I joined the team, and I want to give just a couple thanks, first of all, to the building principal. Throughout the months or the weeks I was subbing there, building principal did ask me, did I want to be a super sub? And he was working on some things to get me to be a super sub. But also want to give a, a thanks to Rhonda Gaver, who was diligently scheduling my opportunities at Grant Marion Middle School. On October 27th, I found out that my time was up at Marion Grant Middle School. I was told by Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Flora, that my services were not needed any longer, based on a comment that I made at the last Board meeting regarding Mr. Saban. Now, I'm not able to push that, pull that recording out, but I encourage you all to look at that recording and, and ponder whether that, what I said at the meeting last time, was a cause for me to be exposed or dismissed as a substitute teacher at Marion Grant Middle School. I reviewed the incident on October 6th as a young man threatened me physically, and created a clear, clear and present danger to, to myself and to his classmates. Now, my intent was not to cause any disruption in Marion City Schools, but I waited, and I waited for a response from the administration, and I put this out, I did get a response from the building principal saying that my time is up, I hear that. And I conclude with this, I didn't feel comfortable going back to the school because of the situation, and I waited. And fortunately, October 27th, I found out news that my services were no longer needed at Marion Grant Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I don't have a paper, but Mr. McGowan, okay, if you could give that paper to me and, or give it to me.
And I do have, I'm really OCD, I do have a syllabus for the Board members with my phone number, if you guys ever have questions in the future.
Thank you.
I am here at the Board meeting to speak only about Harding High School. Sixteen, fifteen years ago, I, I came here from a different school district, and I was planning on this place to be a stepping stone. And I got here for a year or two, and I found out that, well, I really love this place. And fast forward, I've, I've been a multi-term Board member in Upper Sandusky in our little community. And I love this place so much that I actually talked my wife into letting our youngest daughter transfer in the middle of her freshman year to come down to be a part of Harding. And I share this with you because I want you to know I'm an outsider. My wife and I did start our careers in Marion back in '89, '90, '91. We lived here in Marion, but we had to leave for residential reasons. So I wanted to give you that context to let you know I, I do really care about this place. And a little bit of humor here for you, I am saving you guys some money by retiring this year, so I hope that helps you with that. I want to speak about the daily incidental behaviors of Harding High School. I'm extremely concerned. I'm not here to blame anybody. I support our three principals who are trying very hard to deal with it, four principals. But over the last four years or so, I'm seeing an erosion of daily incidental behavior. I have students who come to me, and in the midst of the conversation with me, they're dropping F-bombs. For me, being a teacher for so many years, I've never dealt with that, and each year it's been increasing. I look at our dress code. Just before this COVID stuff started, I felt that there was a change in policy. I don't know if it was incidental, I don't know if it was directed from the top, but we have students coming to the school each day. We have girls with low-cut blouses with, to show their tattoos are caught across the chest. We have kids coming in, girls, with their entire midriff showing, with piercings and tattoos. We have kids that are still wearing masks, that wear hoodies, and the hoodies are pulled tight. So all you see are their eyes. And last year, I, I showed up to school, and after about a week, I just said, I'm retiring. I told my wife, I'm retiring. It was scary. She talked me off the ledge, and now that I am officially retiring, I thought the Board needed to hear from somebody that's daily, boots on the ground, because even our principals are removed from it. It's a big building. And if I talk to, and if you talk to the majority of the teachers who are cohorts that I work with, I'm sure that is one thing that we need to address. I have other things. I hear my time is up, I, I understand that my time's limited. I didn't know that last week, but I talked with Mr. Massey on the phone. If I can just address a couple more things.
I, I have to, I have to cut you off because I, I feel really bad about that, and I would welcome a conversation with you.
Okay. I just want to close with this. Cell phones are the most toxic, dangerous item in our district right now, but I can specifically say at Harding High School, we need to ban cellphone usage. And I have a lot of reasons, and I have a lot of data that I'd be glad to share for that. And again, I want to close just saying, this is not a personal attack on anybody.
I appreciate that.
I'm just being honest with my assessment, and I have, do have a lot more to share if anybody would like to call me up.
Thank you.
These are just generalities. Thank you, sir. My phone number is the top. I would love to share with you.
Is it this one?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item seven, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes.
I would just like to make a motion or suggestion for item 10C under New Business Agreements and Contracts. It's already been mentioned once tonight, and I've sent an email to a couple people who were here tonight. In order to make a, I've said this before about other things, to make an informed decision, I need as much information as possible. I'm not saying yes or no to this, but I would like to delete this from the agenda and bring it up next month, just to table it. Do, and with what Mr. Ratliff even said, the evaluation of said programs. And that's if, if, whether it's been going on for years or whether we're just getting started right now, regardless, that's just one of the things I ask questions about. I don't think I have enough information to make an informed decision. If it's something that's working for our staff and it's being used, or excuse me, utilized on a regular basis and it's helping our staff, then I'm all for it. But if it's used on a minimal basis, then I don't want to hand over $13,000, but I don't have enough information to make that decision yet, so.
What item?
Scott, I was going to ask the same question, which item?
10C, under New Business Agreements and Contracts.
10C.
Yes.
So, do I have a second on that? We'd have to vote on it to delete it.
I will second it. What's the motion?
Just to remove, to table it for a month, if that's the proper etiquette right now. If not, I apologize, but if we're able to get the information to make a decision, I just would like some data on that.
When was this set to start? Under discussion, I'm sorry, Madam President.
That's okay, we've got a second, so.
When was this, what is this set to start? Anybody know?
The term is actually on this, it's November 1st through June 30th. I know that some folks have already seen this person. So this is, this is an employee assistance program, for, for lack of a better, you know, I'd say most school districts have this, this service for people. And what you see there is, you know, although it's called a success coach, I would say the more pertinent part, and it's kind of, I'm reading in the middle, assist employees with confidential face-to-face barrier removal while working in the parameters, policies and procedures. So, you know, there's a whole plethora of things that an employee could go see this particular individual or individuals that might be there, so, and some of them will make sense to you, and some of them will not, but you can literally reach out for a lot of, a lot of different needs. So when I look here, year-to-date service, they've been contacted about finding help with auto repair, career counseling, childcare, child support, clothing help, food, counseling, domestic violence, elder care, emergency, financial, help with needing furniture, home repair, housing, so connecting them with different agencies. And again, to your point, you know, not knowing that and, and not seeing it or not being used to it, as I was in my previous district. to it, as I was in my previous district, I can see the trepidation with, you know, saying, "Hey, is there, is there a different way?"
Or just how much is it being used, to be honest?
Yep.
That's just what I'm against, not a yes or no, it's just.
No, no, I get it, so.
But for me, and I don't know if I'll have to recuse on voting for this, so my son is one of these success coaches. And have you ever not been able to get to work because you don't have gas money? Have you ever not had childcare? And were you ever able to, were you a victim of some mental health-type crisis that affected how you do your job? These are the types of things that we, as we sit around this table, you know, are making inquiries. My son has some, of course, there are things that are very confidential, but some, some of our employees are suffering in silence and some of them are not humble enough to come to your principal and say, "Hey, I ran out of gas on the way to work because I'm living check to check," or "I couldn't make it because my babysitter could not take care of my kid," or whatever. So when we talk about mental health or services that we provide for our students, sometimes our teachers are just as vulnerable. So, and then also, and working with Marion Matters is always a plus for me because of the work that is being done on Bridges Out of Poverty and how impoverished not only are our kids, but sometimes our educators are faced with these dilemmas and these traumas that make them unable to participate and do their jobs to the best of their ability. So I see that as a grant. I love our relationship with Marion Matters and I guess, because my son is a success coach, I don't know if I should recuse or, he's not the one, I'm pretty sure that, is he the one that is, can we discuss that as far as, you said they've seen a person?
We don't have that type of information. We're not allowed to see names, we only know topics and how many. So, Mr. McGowan, we've had about eighteen adults contact this organization. You know, it's paid alternatively.
He was also the one that spoke, right, at Convocation, we talked about it.
At the beginning, that's true. But what I'll say is, to your point again, like all service providers, everything, because this is going to be looked at with, with everything else. But, you know, it appears, again, just being used to a different program, that people are gaining access to Marion Matters. And arguably, maybe in a more timely because it's local, sometimes when you go through a private organization or through your insurance, it takes a little bit longer, something like that. And, you know, all that's going to be looked into and part of our discussion.
And isn't it trendy right now too, because Marion City Schools, Whirlpool has this success coach? There are many organizations that utilize this type of service in order to facilitate and help their employees, correct?
I know, I can't speak to that with Marion Matters, the only thing I know personally is companies have employee assistance programs, but I don't know, you know, the whirlpools or other private companies around, so.
Ms. Reinhardt, this is paid out of, it says rural schools grant, right? So it's not coming out of general fund?
No, it is not.
And if, in the future, as we've looked at this, it's, we don't get the grant, then it might not be something we sustain out of our general fund.
It would definitely have to be a program that...
I'm not hearing either.
I said it's definitely a program you would have to look at to determine if it's something you want to sustain with your general fund.
That's all I'm asking we do. Like, the information we've got tonight is great and that's where I wish, we've got the contract in front of me, that my biggest question was. So we're looking at thirteen thousand dollars annually for six hours a week. And I'm saying to myself, "Well, if, if only one person's going a week, then I'm, I don't know," or if it's one person a month, but if it's, if he's got, or he or she has people banging on their doors every day, then let's get two instead of one. You know, that's, I just, I'm not, yeah.
I can't speak for HR because I don't work in HR, but I know last year, there were many times when, you know, an employee was having a problem, like maybe couldn't get to work, attendance problems, emotional problems. I do know at that point, HR was, you know, this was a strong suggestion, like you can't force them to go, but really, gonna tell ya, probably might want to do this. So I do know that it was a resource for HR and I don't know if Julie's here.
And I don't want to put people on the spot, this is why I'm asking you to table it and present the information, get it to us, and then we vote on it next time, I guess.
I think we had that opportunity since Wednesday.
And Heidi Jones?
I'm not picking on you, but this has been on the agenda for...
I did ask and I'll leave that email private, but it's, this is the first time I'm hearing a lot of this stuff and...
Sure.
Okay, if it's a no, it's a no.
I'll just say again, I know I said it, but...
There's a motion to vote.
We have eighteen and what we can't see is from the eighteen where there are multiple check-ins. But again, you know, the usage will be our, what we look at.
All right.
And this motion is only to table it from the agenda and not, because it can still, it'll still come up for a vote.
So my question is, should I recuse because my son is a success coach?
Only you can make that decision.
So if you're providing over fifty percent of his wellbeing, his livelihood, you have to recuse yourself? If you're supporting him, yeah. If not, then, if not, then that's your choice beyond that. Yeah. I didn't get a second for the tabling of the, I have, Rocky did, okay, sorry.
All right, so we'll, we'll vote now on the table. Tabling of item ten C.
Oh, there is one other change.
A yes vote would be to table it, a no vote would be not to table it.
Okay, there was one other change, just since we're talking about changes to the agenda. We did have an employee who had this, wanted to retire and then changed their mind. And his name is crossed out on the retirements. It is...
Stephen Clark.
Stephen Clark.
Oh.
They just crossed out already.
Yeah, it is, it just got crossed out today, so I wanted you to know it was a change from Friday's agenda.
So he's not even on the agenda? I mean, he was, but then it's been removed, so we don't have to even talk about it.
Right, right, exactly, yep, yep.
All right. So call the roll regarding the...
Wait, what did you say, a no vote means table or a yes vote?
Yes vote means table, no vote means not.
Okay.
Okay, okay, okay. So, Mr. Wiedling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
No.
Ms. Dyer?
No.
Ms. McKay?
No, motion does not carry. Item B, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'm sorry, what is your...
Motion to approve the agenda, item B.
Oh, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
I'm catching up here, okay. Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wiedling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Under old business, we have none. New business. Nine A, overnight field trip, twenty-twenty-three Robotics World Tournament. The superintendent recommends the approval of the overnight field trip for Grant Middle Schools Robotics Team Destination Vex IQ Worlds Competition, Dallas, Texas. Dates April twenty-ninth through May third, twenty-twenty-three. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
All right.
Who, who, who won that battle?
Ted, Ted won that.
Ted did, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Discussion.
I know I'm not on the board, but I just want to mention what an awesome visit it was to this program for me. And they are going, obviously, to the field trip and the, if you approve it, and the Worlds, but they also are going to set up something for a future board meeting for us, if we will say, so it was outstanding.
And if any directors in that program feel that there's anything we can do to maintain the, the level of interest that we see at the, the middle school to carry over to the high school, just to keep the momentum going again, whatever we do well, let's do more of it. Just, again, feel free to, we've seen presentations and based on our kids' past and their success, I'm sure we'll see more, so.
And it looks like they've got... I just gave a donation. And they, and they have thirty-nine students that'll be going to Dallas, it looks like, so. All right, call the roll, please.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Wiedling?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item B, Marion Public Library Board Reappointment. The superintendent recommends the approval of the reappointment of Marion Public Library's current board member, Jennifer Donaldson. The term would run January one, two thousand twenty-three, and end December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-nine. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wiedling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item C, Jennifer Lane, YMCA Create After-School Program Tutor. Do I have a motion? Do I, can I, no, I gotta, sorry, sorry. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wiedling?
Yes.
Sorry about that name there? Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer? Mr. McKinnis?
Abstain.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item D, Jeff Ratliff, head varsity wrestling coach. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And second is Scott. Discussion. Call the roll.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Wiedling?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Head abstain.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Non-teaching, oh, that was... Item E, Tribe Rivers Board Member Appointment. Superintendent recommends appointment of Ted McKinnis to the Tribe Rivers Board of Education from twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-six. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All right, discussion. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Dyer? Mr. Wiedling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
And Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item ten, new business, NCO ESC Adaptive PE Program. This is an amount of thirty-five thousand dollars coming out of the general fund. Superintendent recommends the approval of an agreement between Marion City Schools and North Central Ohio Education Service Center, who will provide adaptive PE services for students retroactive to August first, twenty-twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I just wanted to discuss, and this was something from Mr. Mazzy's agenda review. So we had no applicants meeting the certification requirements and just moving forward, do we know if anybody in the district is interested in?
Yes, yeah, through teaching and learning with the Olympias crew and Jen Sheridan, we have pinpointed somebody, one of our PE teachers, that is going to try to get the AP endorsement. And I'll tell you, it's not unique for Marion, we had the same struggles in my previous district with this particular endorsement and having those services provided in-house.
So currently not able to do it in-house, but moving forward, that's the goal?
That's the goal, absolutely.
I'm taking it from the August first, we've been using it and just never put it on the agenda, retroactively.
Correct. That I didn't know.
All right. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Wiedling?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item B, Kimmel Cleaners. Superintendent recommends the approval of an agreement between Marion City Schools and Kimmel Cleaners, who provide uniform services to the mechanics. This is coming out of the general fund. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion.
Do we have any other services with Kimmel or is it just for these uniforms with mechanics?
That's it, uniforms, yeah.
Call the roll.
Mr. Wiedling?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item C, Marion Matters MOU for Employee Resource Network. The superintendent recommends the approval of an agreement between Marion City Schools and Marion Matters for the operation of Employer Resource Network for the utilization of an onsite success coach. This dollar amount comes to thirteen thousand six hundred and fifty and it's through the rural schools grant. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Just that, I guess, if and when possible, in the future, for, I guess, service-oriented, affecting the staff, just how much it's used, you know, that was the other, I can't remember the name of the program, that, I think it was the science teachers were using, it came up, you know, how oft, so just that, when possible and when it's relevant, so.
I mean, I think for me, I appreciate the actual service, the problem is, I think this is more of a wish list than a priority list. The rural schools grant can be used for a lot of things, not just a success coach, and I think we're misappropriating funds. If we vote this in tonight, I don't want to prejudge anybody's vote. And I understand this is helping our staff, but there's a lot of things that can help our staff that we currently don't have, and I have a hard time spending tax dollars on a success coach or whatever you want to call it, when those tax dollars are coming from the working public that don't have access to a success coach themselves. So we're taking their money in the form of a tax and we're providing a service, which is our school system, and then we're using it and saying, "Oh, we're going to have these great programs like success coaches and so forth," and the person we're taking the money from doesn't have that opportunity. So there's a lot of things that we could be doing with this money that is on my priority list, this would not be one of them, not that I don't care about our staff, but we can, we can do this through HR and come up with services they can call, we can coach them through our HR personnel, we can coach them through our own individual counselors, we can coach them through our administration, we can coach them through building principals. We don't have to create partnerships and spend money when this money could be directed more to a student-based program. That is my two cents, thank you. My only two cents on it is that just a meeting ago or the meeting before that, I think it was you, it might have been other, I might misplace that, but the conversation was about retention and retain, retaining and hiring employees. And this is just one of those things that is small, but yet important, it's like the starfish on the, on the beach story. It's important to that one person that you save. And I think that when we're talking about retention and hiring and keeping our staff, this is one of those important steps, maybe minor, maybe it could be used for something else, but this was an important, to me, it's an important step for our staff.
And I guess so it's not taken out of context, previewing my vote, it's based on information. That's, that's where I stand tonight, so.
Heidi Jones, we had that presentation at Convocation Day, conversations with people who were involved, and, you know, when I was in the district, a single parent of four, I would have killed for something like this to help me through, and I had twins at one particular time, you know, they didn't get sick at the same time, or, you know, thank God I had a great babysitter. But I think of the mental health of our staff and even knowing that there are services thank God I had a great babysitter. But I think the mental health of our staff and even knowing that there are services out there that our staff don't even know about, you know. But I think Heidi Jones or any of the success coaches could, you can have that conversation with them. And I'm interested, Mr. Ratliff, on, could you email me some of the things that are on your list that you want to do with this rule, school grant? I'm, I'm interested to see if we can make those things happen.
Yeah, I mean, I'll.
I mean, yeah.
I'll look at what the grant could be spent on, I'll email you the list, but the problem is, any list that I give you will be less than, you know, it'll be minus 13.5 that we could have spent on it. That's the whole problem. We don't have a priority list, we have wish lists.
All right, call the roll, please. Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wiedling?
No.
Mr. Ratliff?
No.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item D, Frontier Communications. Dollar amount is $727.04 a month. Superintendent recommends the approval of an agreement between Marion City Schools and Frontier Communications to move from PRI, Primary Rate Interface, to SIP, Session Initiation Protocol, to access external phone systems. This is an improvement to our system with less monthly cost. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wiedling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. All right. Do we need to go into executive session for any item on our consent calendar? Okay. Item A, Consent Calendar Approval. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted by the board in one motion in the form listed below. There will be no discussion of these items prior to the time the board votes on the motion unless members of the board, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and removed from the consent agenda. The superintendent recommends approval of all consent agenda items. Deployment is specifically conditioned on and subject to successful background checks, receipt and final administrative review of all application records, and receipt of all necessary documentation. Do I have a motion?
Madam President, on the consent agenda, I would like to remove myself from voting on an individual named Heidi Ratliff. She's under the Volunteers on Subject J.
Under J, you said?
It's under the Volunteer section. I think that's the only one that I have relation.
Vote on that separately?
Yeah, yeah, I just, that's the only one I have a relationship to that I would not be able to feel comfortable voting.
Okay.
I move the approval of the consent agenda minus the one Mr. Ratliff just mentioned.
And item J.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second. Do you have all that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Okay. Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Wiedling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item.
And then do we want to add that now, or?
Yep. So I need a motion to accept the volunteer of Heidi Ratliff.
Motion, Ratliff.
Second, second, okay.
Discussion? Nope, no discussion, sorry. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wiedling?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Head Upstein.
And Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. All right, on to board announcements. Oh, gosh. Future board meetings. We have a lot coming up in January, but our next meeting, for the final meeting of the year, is December 12th at 6:00 PM in this room. We will meet as a board January 7th to screen superintendent applications. At that time, this will be an executive session. We have an organizational meeting, January 11th at 4:30, followed by a regular meeting and executive session to interview superintendent candidates on the 11th, and we will do that again on the 12th. And our regular meeting is the 17th of January, and then we have a Thursday meeting slash forum slash final interviews for the next superintendent. So a lot going on there. Do we have any committee reports? We'll start with extracurricular. Rocky or Tara, do you have anything for us? On extracurricular?
I missed the last one.
Okay. All right. Anybody from Buildings and Grounds? Okay. Communications, Scott or Ted?
We don't meet again until December.
Okay. Curriculum, Tara or Ted?
I can report. We met for our October meeting. We did not have one in November because of the Ohio School Board Association. At the curriculum meeting, we discussed preschool. We approved, the, the state has approved 13 more seats for us for the three-year-olds. The YMCA site for the preschool has been moved to Harrison, and it's, they're applying now for license at Harrison, and we expect that to be stepped up to quality approval. We discussed CKLA at length. Teacher feedback has been good, but the teachers thought we were doing, being a little too aggressive in our PD, so they wanted more time to collaborate and implement a couple of the things. So the PD for November 28th was pushed back to January 17th. That was the writing PD portion of CKLA. There's a lot of activity in CKLA, and they're bringing in a lot of outside programs to help supplement their, and that's what it's all about, is as they go through each of the sections, like Garfield brought in an OSU Extension Office person, third-grade classes at James, invited James Anderson from the Tall Grass Trailers. Those kinds of things are going on on a regular basis. Matt McQuarrie is starting a monthly video series highlighting different parts of CKLA. We also discussed at our meeting, the after-school programs now exist at all eight buildings. Staffing's been a little bit challenging, but I think they're getting that handled. The math committee is finalizing the math instruction vision the staff would like to have for that math program. The, there's some peace officer training. We're looking forward in the future to, at our next meeting, to talk about CTE, micro-farming, gifted update, and GPS program. So we had a very lengthy and good curriculum meeting.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. I don't think the DEI committee has met. Finance, Ted and I met last week.
I think you heard our finance committee report.
Almost lasted just as long.
I think we should do it again.
Not going to give that again.
And we also met last week regarding policies, and we will have a list of those for the first reading in December. Okay, and most of those are just cleaning up language, I think. All right. Ted, do you have anything as legislative liaison?
No.
Tara, student achievement?
Of course. So as I've been traveling around the district and either following the Marion City Schools district on, up to the Marion Star, just talking to people, but also looking at our socials, our social media, I'm very proud of what the students in the Marion City Schools are achieving. So we voted to give our kids pins as we shout them out in the board meeting. So the following are who the board would like to recognize during this November's meeting. So Jane Harper's class, amazing. I went there and had the kids greet to me, and so I want to thank Leslie, Henry, Rayland, Haley, Catherine, Emily, Taylan, Veda, Mitchell, Eliza, Beckham, Nyla, Camden, Ben, Charlotte, and Carter. Of course, I didn't say their last names, and they wrote, they gave me some really cute cards, and just like you said, there's that new furniture, that blue table. So Nyla sent me a thank you card, and there I am, I'm the pretty one, Mr. Wiedling.
I can tell that.
So I thank Mrs. Harper's class. Varsity H Leadership, I don't know if you knew that they did a great job with providing an outlet for our kids on Halloween. Taylor Iden is the president, Jaden Combs, vice president, Shelby Stimson, Jacob Beachler, Riel Stone, Autumn Fitzgerald, Cam Rayner, Alex Stokes, Alexander Kusicki, Austin Allen, Terrance Simmers, Jackson Shipley, Landon Adams, and Parker, as well as Jordan Hensley. We've already talked about the robotics team and what a phenomenal job that they're doing. They're just really excellent, and I can't wait for them to do a presentation. I wasn't able to attend the presentation that they did, but I look forward to that. I know you do, too. But Macy Harper, Liam Hoy, Brayden Crosby, Justice Fulen, Landon Blackford, Kenneth Ash, and Christopher Skinner. These are all the different teams that have qualified to go to the state competition in March. I also talked to the parent of Jeffrey Wright, who was Prexie of the Month, receiving straight A's. He made the basketball team at Grant. He's so happy about that, and he's just an all-around great kid who's been attending a lot of leadership. I expect to see his name a lot. And most importantly, I mean, in conclusion, how many of you went to the production of The Wizard of Oz? How many of you were so impressed by that production? Was that just amazing? That was just, so special shout out to Barb and James Reedham. No, they're not students. Barb was a former teacher, but they made a huge contribution to all those flying things. Our kids were like, it was just amazing. I couldn't believe that that was a high school production. So shout out to the cast and the staff of the amazing Wizard of Oz. That's it for me.
You couldn't even tell it was high school.
It was amazing, wasn't it?
It was good for any age level.
And they had like the littles from the elementary schools that were the.
Only 150.
Everywhere.
Munchkins and the lions and the tigers and the bears. It was just, it was just simply amazing. So shout out to that crew, and everybody did an outstanding job. So if you missed it, you missed out.
And I think we also have the OMEA State Band Finals, and our band received an excellent this year.
Yeah, I can shout out the band every, every meeting. I don't want to appear biased, but.
If anybody gets a chance to go to Hilliard next year to watch the band's state finals, it's quite something. So it is really a lot of fun. Okay. Item 15A, organizational meeting and president pro tem. We need to nominate someone to run the meeting at the next January 11th meeting. Do I have a recommendation?
I move to appoint Mrs. McKay, president pro tem, for the organizational meeting to be held at 4:30 PM on July, January 11th, 2022.
Do I have a?
I'll second.
Tara, go. All right. Don't argue with you guys. All right. Call the roll, or discussion?
Mr. McKinnis? Oh, I'm sorry. Did you say take the roll?
Yeah, call the roll.
Okay. Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wiedling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. We now need to go into executive session for item A, the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official licensee, or regulated individual. I need a motion to adjourn.
What?
To go into.
Oh, to go into executive session.
Dark.
Okay, roll call. Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wiedling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. Thank you all for coming. I really appreciate your attendance here tonight. Go home safely, and we'll see you in December.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.